I needed to order a little late this evening, 6:37. We had a Board of Finance meeting in here, so we had to share our space. First order of business, Secretary's report. So we had a lot of meeting minutes to approve because I didn't have them ready for the last meeting, so I don't know, did you all have a chance to look at them?
I read them and I have a couple of proposed changes.
Okay. Do you want to take a minute by minute, I mean, a meeting by minutes, meeting?
Yeah, let's, I'm, I'm fine with the meetings of April 22nd and April 30th, and I'm happy to make a motion that we approve those as presented.
Okay, what about, it's 4:30 and 4:22, okay?
Okay, going back, I know you, you try to amend things, you try to present it so you get the gist of it, but I thought on April 8th, on number seven, the Audience of Citizens, it, it didn't capture really what he was saying. He specifically said that if, if, if a Chester group is planning an event, they should have it in Chester. That was, that's what he wanted to say, and he also was suggesting that Tri-Town would might want to consider having some of their events, if they are of a sensitive nature, in, spread the wealth, have it in Chester and Essex as well as Deep River, rotate it a bit.
Well, I don't have that agenda in front of me, so you were referring to...
That's helpful.
So the correction of when people have public events, like the valleys and that sort of thing?
Yes, yes.
So the audience, he had said, they should have it in Chester if it's a Chester group organizing?
Yes, and if it's, and consider having Tri-Town have other locations than Deep River, so that we didn't end up with picketing.
Okay.
Anyway, that, that captured, yes, thank you. And then on, and, and that was a regular meeting, by the way, not a special meeting. Then on April 9th, on, I don't know that we captured an item two, Duane's motion fully. I think he made the motion to move forward with the process that was detailed in the 326 memo.
And 326 memo is what?
Was Dick Clayton's memo, or Building Inspector's memo. You can have this if, if this verbiage helps. You know, he made the motion to present details...
After the executive session?
No, I think we're still in there, because...
You can't make motions in the executive session?
Yeah, executive session closed at 8:52, and then the minutes reflect, but what Duane made the motion on, when I read it, it didn't make full of sense. I think when he made the motion, I was, let's, made the motion to follow the process as detailed in that 326 memo that the Building Inspector had put together. So if you, if you want this, you can have it too, if it's helpful.
Are we, are we talking about...
Was the memo presented in executive session?
I don't have that minutes in front of me, but that was the executive session that we had?
Then we came out of executive session.
And then we talked about the process going forward?
Yes.
That...
This never references a memo, I don't think.
Well, I, I went back and looked at my notes, and it was, it was, I believe, this was the memo, and, and then the Planning and Zoning Chair went through it and looked at it, there was some back and forth, and that's the process.
Application procedures?
Yes.
So the motion, the way I wrote it up is that Duane made a motion to have Bullock present details of discussion of procedural steps when building permits are received and issued to Planning and Zoning for approval.
So he's going to present this...
So you just are happy if we reference this memo that Dick wrote to Planning and Zoning?
Yes, this, this makes it clear what the process is.
Okay, because Tony did present that to Planning and Zoning, okay. So this is yours, bud?
Okay.
But that, that, I'm trying to, I don't want to get, say, because of the executive session, but when we came out of executive session, and we said Tony was going to go to his board and talk about the step, the procedures.
And Dick had put in an email, plus he outlined, this is what I think the procedure should be, so Catherine would just look at it.
I'm hung up on the procedure meaning go to the next step, because at that discussions, it was talked about going through the state, correct? Codes and, codes and standards?
Yeah, but this, the way that I wrote the minutes, it just says procedures for processes for permits.
And, and, so are we leaving it that, that, you made the motion that we take the processes and P&amp;Z Chair take them back to P&amp;Z?
That was, that was, we understand that when we talked about that day...
That's what I wrote down.
That he was supposed to go back to P&amp;Z and work, that we, that we resolved all the issues that were talked about, and to go, go back to his group and to see if they still want to go to codes and standards.
All right, so we don't have to reference this at all?
That was, that was my motion, because I said, let's try to work this out and figure it out.
Well, then do we want to add that detail to it, so it's clearer?
I, I don't think we ever referenced that memo in the meeting, so I don't...
No, I mean, Duane's detail now about the process and, and a decision on going to codes and standards or not.
No.
No?
That was talked about in the executive session.
All right, so we're going to leave it as process. I'm fine with that, if that's what it is. I'm, I'm fine with that.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think talking about it now outside executive session is not kosher.
No, and that's why I'm trying to, oh...
Yep, got it, all right, thank you.
All right, so right now I have changes to 4-8. What else do we have?
And that's...
4-9, we're leaving as is?
Yeah, and 4-10.
And 4-10.
So I can, I can...
Okay, so we need a motion to accept April 8th?
As...
With the corrections of maybe adding a little more detail to that Audience of Citizens comments?
And 9 and 10 as stand.
Okay.
Second.
Second, any more discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Okay, so we have Audience of Citizens. Bullock, you're reminded to state your name for the record, comments should be kept in action in five minutes, public comments not intended, but question and answer, rather an opportunity to address the board. So right now we have two, four, five people here, and we have three online, okay? Okay. Would you like to go first?
Sure.
Okay.
Good evening, I'm Robert Ginder, and I live at 137 Kirkland Street. I'd like to bring to the attention of the Board of Selectmen an ongoing issue that I've experienced with filing a judgment on the land records through the Town Clerk's office. I won't go into too much detail, but after three attempts, it's close to being resolved. The document was finally accepted for recording into the land records this morning, but it was indexed incorrectly, and I'm requesting that the index be corrected. So in the index, the judgment for the permanent injunction lists all the parties, both the plaintiffs and the defendant, as both grantors and grantees, which misrepresents the legal relationship in the matter. I've since sent a clear and detailed explanation to both the Town Clerk and the Town Attorney showing that the grantor-grantee distinction is not only inaccurate, but essentially, is essential to be correctly reflected in the index. But we continue to receive pushback from the Town Clerk's office, and that's why I ask for help from the Board of Selectmen. And whether perceived or real, the pushback makes me question whether or not certain town employees may be favoring or protecting the former first selectman Angus McDonald. To give you some brief background, landing neighborhood residents, Warren Stewart and I were awarded a permanent injunction by the Middlesex Superior Court against the lace factory LLC. This is not just a general court order, it is a judgment that imposes specific permanent restrictions on the use of the land, the lace factory property at 161 River Street in the land neighborhood. These restrictions relate directly to the building and the land itself, such as where soundproofing must be installed, and limitations on outdoor use, not just the operations of the business. The purpose of the judgment is to protect the use and enjoyment of our residential properties, which are adjacent to the lace factory. Because of the nature of the ruling, we have the right under Connecticut General Statute 47-12A to record this judgment in the land records. We just ask that the index correctly reflect the outcome that we were awarded the judgment against the lace factory LLC by the court. This isn't just about paperwork. Land records exist to provide clear notice to future property owners, attorneys, and the public about legal obligations and restrictions tied to parcels of land. Indexing matters. A misindexed judgment could result in misinterpretation of how each property owner is affected in the future, and I want to avoid that from happening. So tonight I respectfully asking the Board of Selectmen to review the situation and to help ensure that the judgment is correctly indexed on the land records in a way that clearly reflects the actual roles of each party and the properties involved. All I ask is that the index be corrected without further resistance. Thank you.
Is this the time I should do this, or is there another time?
No, you're actually on the agenda, Jerry.
Thank you.
Yeah. Anyone online would like to address the board? I don't see any hands up or anything.
I think that, sorry, just a couple of minutes. I had stated a number of years ago, when Mr. Ginder was attending an awful lot of Planning and Zoning Commission meetings, I was no longer going to allow him to just come in and make blanket statements that was filled with innuendo. I'm, any accuracy, I think the first thing to, to indicate that he believes that the town staff is in some way favoring me, because I was the first selectman for whatever reason, is not only an insult to me, but it is an insult to me and my administration, it's also an insult to the staff at this town hall. I can guarantee you that every single person here, and Carol, you can speak to this, every employee, N.T., you can't, every employee that's here, I asked them to make sure that they, they did the exact opposite of that. So that's, that's one thing. The second thing is to speak to this affidavit that Mr. Ginder's filing. I'm absolutely happy with him filing that on the land records. I've already given it to the Planning and Zoning Commission twice, but I want to make sure that you understand when he calls it an injunction, that is an inaccuracy, it is a decision made by the courts. Mr. Ginder will continue to walk around saying how that they won the case. Well, let's look at it this way, they asked for the lace factory to be closed, that was the injunction they asked for. The judge said no. They asked for hundreds of thousands of dollars in damages, the judge awarded them fifteen thousand dollars, seventy-five hundred dollars each to be shared to compensation, past and future inconvenience, this is all in the affidavit. They asked for us to pay their attorney's fees, denied. He talks about improvements to the building, the judge required that, but that was already, the only thing she required is what came up in the trial and stuff that we were already working on. So we concluded that. Everything's fine, I'm happy with this being filed, it's already upstairs on, in the, the building file, so I don't care if it's not filed or not, but I do not like the innuendos and the faucets that Mr. Ginder continues to write. So that's my feeling here. The second thing is, just an FYI, based on my experience, the Board of Selectmen has absolutely no say in the Town Clerk's office. So you can talk to Amy all you want to, you cannot tell her how to file something. That's between her and the Town Attorney.
Thank you. Well, it's not really a response, an question and answer, do you have something new to add?
Yes.
Okay.
So I just wanted to address some of the things that Mr. McDonald said, some inaccuracies that he mentioned. For one, the court does not allow you to ask for monetary damages for something like that, that is not true. We did not ask for any lawyer's fees, we did not ask for any monetary reimbursement or anything, that does not happen in the law. I don't know if you've ever been to court, but you cannot ask for that, doesn't happen. So that's one of the things that I, I wanted to mention.
Does this have anything to do with your, your original, that you'd like the Board of Selectmen to...
No, I just was just hearing what he said, saying that, that we asked for monetary damages and attorney's fees and things like that, none of that is true, he was making that up.
Oh, that's all in the affidavit.
Oh, the other thing is, it is a permanent injunction, if you, if you look at the court records, court records are public records, the, the judgment is filed now on the land records, you'll be able to see that as of tomorrow, and you'll see that it is a permanent injunction, so yes, it's a permanent injunction, it was awarded to us against the lace factory.
All right, thank you.
So Carol, is there something a Selectmen, we need to do, or you need to do as first selectman on this issue?
No, no, it's not on the agenda, it was Audience of Citizens comment, no? Maybe at a later date we can talk about it, but we're, we're done at this point. Do you concur with that?
Yeah, I mean, if it's in the hands of the Town Clerk, I, I don't know what, you know, what we can do to help, I don't know, I'm not a, I'm not an attorney, I'm not a land use guy, so I'm not going to...
Well, I did speak to the Town Clerk numerous times, spoke to our attorney numerous times, and it seems to, everything that our staff did seems to be in order, so...
I think the last step was, is there a difference between a grantor and a grantee? And my understanding is that everyone was listed as one or the other, and there's a differentiation, so I think that might need looking at again. I think that may have been a simple administrative error, not an error of intent.
Okay, next on the agenda, appointment of Kimberly Lambert. So Kimberly Lambert is our, going to be our new Animal Control Officer Assistant to Caroline Fountain. Caroline is very close to going out on maternity leave, so then Kimberly will take over as Animal Control Officer in the interim. So she does need an official appointment by us, she was appointed by Essex, and all the towns that are part of the regional animal control are asked to do the appointment so she can get her certification with the state or whatever she needs.
And when the other lady comes back after maternity, will this lady still be employed, or will...
I believe she will continue on as Assistant. Steve, do you know any different with Caroline or with...
She's being hired as a temporary thing.
It's not a temporary thing.
Right, the other Assistant is no longer...
Right, so Heather is no longer as the Assistant.
Okay.
So we aren't, right, so we aren't increasing...
So no cost, cost will maintain, this remain the same, the town will just now have their new personnel in place to help Caroline. So I just need a motion to, yeah, go ahead.
I'll make a motion to appoint Kimberly Lambert as Assistant Animal Control Officer?
I stuck in the motion?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I got feedback that the online people are only looking at like my nose, I don't know if we want to move this so they can get a better view.
Well, see the camera, looks like it sees everything.
It's frozen on me. More attention than I need.
Is that better, or are you still looking at Catherine's nose? Everyone's very quiet online.
All right, thank you.
Okay, let's see, request from the Estuary. So I just wanted to bring this to your attention, due to all the budget cuts, the Estuary is reaching out with an urgent request for support to continue serving the community's needs of their seniors and the new educational program. To address this need, we're requesting $2,500 in funding from each of the nine towns we serve. They've already secured $10,000 grant towards this $40,000 project, but relying on additional support to cover the new cost of a new gas combination oven. Their oven, I guess, died. Funding from a failure of one of their critical commercial ovens, an essential tool that was neither planned for nor budgeted nor expected. So I would like to kind of make a motion for the Board of Selectmen to bring this to the Board of Finance, to request an additional $2,500 to go to the Estuary.
Have all the other towns homed up?
I have not checked with all the other towns, but this is the letter, you can enter it into, onto the record, you know, you can read the whole thing, but basically one of their commercial ovens died, and it's now this urgent need. They were able to secure some grant funding, but not enough to cover the whole thing.
You know, they do terrific work, there's no question about it.
There's no doubt, but I, I don't want to be the only one, or, you know, where were we, I said nine towns? You know, and all of a sudden only three pay or four pay, and it's not fair, I mean, everyone should be in, in. I think it's a wonderful program that they do, which should all...
Just finished the budget, and, and as it is, we've narrowed the surplus down to the smallest it's been in years, it hasn't been approved by the town yet. The timing of this is awkward, I mean, where would this money be coming from?
I, I don't know, there might be some in the, you know, I, I'm not sure where we can find it, we probably could find 2,500 even if it came out of building repairs or something, but that's really not the right line to take it out of, so I think the Board of Finance, I would, I would like to approve it here, and then at least bring it to the Board of Finance for them to see if we can find the money.
Did you speak with Heather directly, the Director, and find out if there, the town budgets, are there, are they doing a fundraising on this, are they doing, reaching directly to citizens to pay for this?
No, they got a $40,000 grant, they're just trying to supplement the, the grant.
They want to get it.
So nine towns, 2,500, so another, you know...
So this is the quickest way for them.
And, and I think when they break it down by nine towns, 2,500 isn't a huge sum, it's a little more reasonable to see if people at this stage in your budgets had a little, something that they could throw towards them, but, but I can reach out to Heather to see how many towns...
I'm just curious.
It would, it would be good to get a little more information, and to see if there's any...
The Board of Selectmen only meets once a month, so their next meeting is the 27th, so with Board of Finance, so if we put this off, then we're in June.
I'm comfortable if we were to move it to discuss with the Board of Finance without giving it approval at this point.
So maybe our next meeting, we stay in session, we move it, or just to, right?
I'm making a motion to bring it to the Board of Finance and, and talk about it. I'm not saying to approve it, but I'm saying to, to talk about it, and in the meantime, hopefully you can gather some more information with the other eight towns.
Okay.
And see, see what they've done, or they are doing.
I second Duane's motion.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Move it to Board of Finance. Okay, town meeting budget vote.
Hi Carol, this is Tim, Tim Wieling. Just, just to let you know, the camera shows, it's all blurry, you can't see anything other than, you know, Katie occasionally, when she comes.
Okay, I can shut the camera off if it's getting people dizzy.
No, no, that's okay, I just, you should, no, that's all.
Oh, thank you. I just had somebody try to fix this camera a couple of meetings ago. All right, so request from Estuary, town meeting budget vote, discussion and motion to move the town budget vote to referendum. So we had talked about the idea of having, you know, at the annual town meeting, the budget gets presented, talked about, and then we typically take the vote that night. We've had a lot of complaints, if we get a nice turnout, it's just very slow for people to vote, and it also makes people have to come out and attend the meeting, and then the voting isn't until the end of the meeting. So to make it easier on our residents, we thought we'd move it to a referendum, which would be, by statute, has to be seven days after the meeting, or within 14 days after the meeting, which would put our town meeting, the 19th, which is always the third Monday, we would put the referendum on the 27th, but that would allow residents to come out between the hours of 12 and 8 p.m. to vote on the budget. We thought that was more convenient. So we did do, we did publish a legal notice saying that we'd have the vote at the night of the meeting, all the, we've done some research to make sure it's all legal to basically move it to referendum, but it's perfectly okay to do that. So tonight we wanted just to make it clear to the residents that we will have a separate referendum for the vote, so if you can come to the town meeting, the budget will be presented again, the Board of Ed budget will be presented for the Reach, for the elementary school, Region 4 was already voted on. So if you've already heard the presentation of the budget on April 30th, which is when it was presented, no changes were made to that budget, so if you can come out for the town meeting, great, if you don't choose to, because you've already heard the budget, then just show up on the 27th to vote for the budget. So that's why we just wanted to make that clear, put it in our, and I do have the actual call of that meeting for the 27th. I don't really need to read it, but it's basically coming out of the Town Clerk's office now to make an official announcement of the referendum for the 27th.
So I'm sure we have a better turnout on that, that vote than we did Region 4.
Yeah, what was the Region 4 numbers? I published numbers, not even...
That was for us, but I think it was 600 between the three towns.
Yeah, very sad.
We had the most turnout.
We had the most turnout, and we had the most turnout.
However you vote, whether you vote for or against it, it doesn't make a difference, but use your...
But come out and vote, right. So Carol, is this a matter of timing between when we're making the motion, do we need to make a motion here today on this to move, to move it, or you just share it with the public?
We don't have to make a motion to move it forward unless we want to do that.
No, we've already made a motion to go to 19.
Discussion and motion to move the town budget vote to refer, oh, yes, let's make the mo, let's be all official, make it a motion and move it to referendum.
I make a motion that we move the town budget to referendum, which will be held on May 27th, as duly noted, both on the website and in legal notice.
Yeah, and, all in favor?
Aye.
So now we are all official that we're having a referendum, very good. Okay, next, Neighborhood Assistance Act Program Proposal. I have Allison here from the First Congregational Church of Deep River, and this is just a procedural thing, but thank you for coming.
You're welcome, and thank you for having us and your hard support. I appreciate the opportunity to just put a spotlight on Deep River Congregational Church, because it is a central institution in town, used well beyond conventional church functions, serves as a local community center, actively used nearly six days a week year round by various groups from the shoreline area for community programs and services, and that ranges from shoreline soup kitchen and food pantry, free meals are served every Thursday, Alcoholics Anonymous groups for men and women, guiding eyes for the Blind Puppy Training, Connecticut River Valley Synphonic Band, Horseshoe League, Girl Scout, Boy Scout meetings, Red Cross blood drives, and more. It's our intent to keep the church up and well maintained, and this Neighborhood Assistance Act Program has helped us do that with energy conservation projects that are much needed. So to save precious budget dollars, protect our building for the future, we've identified several projects that we need this year, and trustees are actually meeting right now as we're meeting to give me some final dollar numbers, but we still have some drafty windows that need to be replaced and repaired, air handlers that are nearing 30 years old, which when I talked to one maintenance company said, your air handlers have been truly blessed because they usually last 20 years, protective insulating materials for ceilings, flooring, walls, and windows, and we always include the energy efficient lighting as needed for the building parking area. So it will be above $20,000 as a request for this year, and I'll get you more concrete number before it goes to the public hearing, but we would ask for the town's support in just getting us to the state level of approval for this Neighborhood Assistance Act.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion, it's a wonderful program that you've done, you come here every year, so...
So the procedure is, we have to approve it, then it goes to a town meeting, and the residents still have to approve?
Exactly.
The town supporting this.
It's a marathon.
It's no, it's no money from us as the town taxpayers, so it's just a, a procedure.
Right, right.
I think they just, before awarding, they want to make sure you basically have the backing and the support of your local...
And that it's a legitimate nonprofit asking to participate, and yeah, that's what the town does for the state, that's all.
Okay, so I have a motion.
I'll send it.
All in favor?
Aye.
So we are hoping that we have another group coming, our next Board of Selectmen meeting, and then probably mid-June, we'll schedule a town meeting, so...
Okay, perfect, thank you so much.
If you're available to come to that, that might be when you all get more questions, the town meeting.
Absolutely.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Very good, okay. Memorial Day parades, so I just wanted to put this out there so the public, if people watch our minutes, watch the meetings, we have two parades in town, we have one in Winthrop on Sunday, 1 o'clock, so that would be the 25th?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so that kicks off from the Winthrop... Yes, okay. So that kicks off from the Winthrop Baptist Church, walks down to the Winthrop Cemetery. There's a ceremony there. Then on Monday, we have a parade that kicks off from Devitt Field at 9:00 AM, comes down Main Street, takes a right on River, right on High Street, and then it goes into the cemetery, Fountain Hill for a little ceremony, proceeds back down High to the Veterans Green. We ask all residents to come out, support the memory of our fallen heroes and support the veterans. So those are two great events in town. And then if it does rain, we will try to post as soon as we know. If there's any cancellations, we'll work with the veterans groups, the police. So please check the website, and then I think social media for various groups, probably the veterans group, American Legion.
And all veterans are invited to march. They don't have to be a member of the Legion. If you served, just get in the march.
Yeah, and if you do, and you would like to participate, but you don't think you can do the walk, there's going to be cars available for giving, giving rides or lifts, so please don't let that stop you. Yeah, come out. Okay, now we have RiverCog, letter of support to the Gateway Commission. So basically, RiverCog has asked all the towns that are along the river, there's eight towns, to support writing a letter to Eversource to ask them to replace, they're replacing some overhead lines, and they're asking them to put them underground, under the riverbed, so that the sightline, the scenic beauty is not interrupted. Jerry Roberts is here from the Gateway Commission, just to give us a little more background.
Sure.
Yep?
I have a one-page letter I could read if you like.
Okay.
Or I could just make some comments. The biggest comment, too, is that what we are asking all the towns along the river to ask the Connecticut Siting Council that Eversource be required to reply a full application, not just a petition. Because a petition doesn't require them to have hearings, and it doesn't require feedback, it doesn't require analysis. So we're specifically asking all the towns to request from the Connecticut Siting Council that Eversource needs to make a full application, not just a petition. And then we are inviting you folks and anybody else in Deep River or the world who would like to attend. Eversource representatives are making a, a, a presentation to Gateway on May 22nd at RiverCog, and it will be both in-person and a hybrid, and so we would welcome anyone to show up. Let me try to read this quickly.
What time is that on the 22nd, Jerry?
Our meetings are at 7:00, which is why I thought this was at 7:00.
7:00 PM?
Our, our meetings are 7:00 PM.
Okay.
But we'll make sure to give a notification as well. So actually, I, there, this began quite some time ago when a group of citizens from several different communities came to Gateway meetings and requested that Gateway stand up for them. It's interesting that often people complain that Gateway is telling them what they can or can't do with trees and other things, but they also want us to protect the river and the river seam. And so we responded to that and looked into this. And basically, here's the way this is working. So Eversource wants to replace two transmission, overhead power crossings, one at Scoville Rock to Herd Park, and the other from Haddam to East Haddam. The cost is clearly a consideration. We all know that. We all know it's more expensive to put something under the river than over the river. However, cost is important determining this, and cost was considered on the three different times that the Scoville Rock Crossing was ordered underground by three different entities, first by the State's Water Resources Commission, then by the CT Department of Environmental Protection, and finally by the Power Facility Evaluation Council, and upheld by the Connecticut Supreme Court. And then they were funding granted permission to go overhead, even though all of these entities recommended in fact to afford that they didn't. So more than six months have passed since we, Gateway, has requested that Eversource provide us not only with cost analysis, which they haven't done, but other information about the underground alternative for these crossings. A lot has changed over the years, and a lot has changed in the way you can run things underground than the old days when it was prohibited. Eversource's response has been that this would come, become available when they filed their petition to the Connecticut Siting Council. But under a petition, the Connecticut Siting Council isn't even required to consider alternatives. Furthermore, only in the case of a full application for a certificate is there an option for a full public hearing at which affected part, affected parties can seek information and introduce evidence. Taking into account that these facilities have now been in place for over 50 years, it is time to, we strongly urge you to consider other more modern options and reevaluate the situation. So again, they just want to file a petition, which means there's no accountability. We want the towns to ask that they file a, a, an application, which then means there'll be public hearings, and then that means they'll have to get cost analysis and why they're going to let it go. So that's why we're looking for your support.
So in essence, it's Haddam and East Haddam that are directly affected, and you're asking all RiverCog members to weigh in and solve the issue?
Yes, because we're all using power, and what happens in one town could happen in another. And we're just trying to say that now 50 years after these were originally installed, that they have to be replaced. It's a good time to consider more modern, that there are a lot more techniques that are used now for going underground. And of course, it also future proves you from weather reasons, which is, it's a lot better not just for the scenic view, but it is expensive, but you're buying into long haul, not the short expediency. But our, our big thing is, right now, the way they want to handle this is to not have the scrutiny and, and input. And we're just asking that the towns let them know that we would like them to file a full application. And again, we'd love to have any and all who would like to attend our meeting on May 22nd, where Eversource's project manager, Eric Barber, is scheduled to appear before us and give a presentation. And we've been asking for this for, what, six months?
Jerry, do you know we have a mid-East Haddam stand on this?
I personally don't. I know that we sent about two weeks ago stuff to you folks. I think we sent it to all towns.
Yeah, well, the eight, eight towns are on the letter.
That's right.
Just the towns that are on the river, so not all RiverCog, because there's 17 towns in the river.
And we're just starting to get feedback from all of them. We haven't gotten feedback from anybody. I personally know, I'm, I'm dealing, we have several different commissions within the commission. I'm not actually personally dealing with this one. But I know that we're, they're starting to get feedback, and tomorrow they will send out replies to the feedback. But again, simply we're asking that the towns support, not necessarily just us Gateway, that the towns support the protocol that Eversource needs to do this as a application, not a petition.
Gotcha. So they did send a sample resolution they would like us to pass along with the letter, but it does look like a timely, time-sensitive sort of thing because Eversource is going to be presenting soon.
Hearing what Jerry said, it sounds very reasonable that we want a full application and not just a petition. That simple request seems worlds away from this long, complicated, whereas, whatever. I'd be very comfortable with our deciding to write a letter that, that says, "We'd like to see the process of an application filed."
Right. Well, they pretty much wrote the letter.
Yes.
To kind of sign on. So what, what do you think?
Again, I'm all for having the, the full application, but coming out of that industry, the price tag is astronomical to go underground.
Understood.
And again, I respect the Gateway, but these wires have been there for a long time. My father is 88 years old, and he grew up in, in Haddam. So again, I know, but the point being is, it's, alls we hear on the news every week is Eversource, Eversource, the prices, the prices. Where's this money going to come from?
Right.
Us as, as end users?
Right.
They aren't going to come into their piggy bank and pay for this multi, 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 multi-million dollar project.
Sure.
Because it's all ledge up there, too, and it's, it's just, you know, and my, my biggest concern is, yes, it's going to make the Gateway look beautiful, but what about the, the fish, the turtles, the, the creatures that are going to get disturbed when they do that?
Yes.
So again, it, it, I'll support having Eversource go through the application procedure, but I, I, it's a, it's a big task to, to have Eversource do it.
I have, I have no disagreement with your, your approach to this whatsoever. We've talked about all those things you've talked about. We're not saying the only way to do this is to go underground. All we're saying is that should, there should be a procedure that allows more, more transparency. That's all we're asking. And if the ships fall, which they probably will, that it's, it's cost prohibitive, that's great, but we've done our due diligence as a community.
Right, and we've made a point that we would like them to have a little more, like we say, transparency or a little more accountability to that.
I mean, no one, no one expects that magically these resources are going to appear. This is more about the protocol of how we do things. I appreciate your support.
They have a thing with this, just to understand this a bit better. So this is happening in Haddam and East Haddam. Is it Gateway's desire that we would have down the whole river, all electricity underground?
So Gateway had not discussed that. I mean, that's, that's a, it's a cost prohibitively radical idea. As you know, I, as some people know, that in Europe now, in England, no power's put above. It's all put underground. Now, that's easier there because they long-term built the infrastructure to do that. I've had people visit Essex from England and were shocked to see the amount of the underground wires we have. I live up on top of Long Hill Road, and whenever it's windy, we lose power for a couple of hours. I mean, we lose power three or four times a year, and we lose power for days every three or four years. That's because we have a very exposed power grid. Now, that might be necessary because of our topography. I think all we're saying is that when we make massive decisions for the future that are going to affect us for the next 50 years, that it just be done in the protocol of an application where they have to answer more questions. And the questions, as you and I know, probably come down to dollars and cents, and I'm the taxpayer, too.
Jerry, can I just say, so one of the, basically this resolution that they're asking us to pass just does really talk about scenic areas and all these kind of things. And then there is one that says urges the CSC to require a certificate of environmental compatibility and public need for this project. Is that what you were referring to with the, the Siting Council or Siting Council for application? Like, that doesn't seem to be referenced in the resolution.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm sorry that I can't answer that. The, the folks that have been, on committee that have been working on this, would know the answers to those. But again, all we're asking for right now is not for anybody to say, "Yes, they should," or "No, they shouldn't." It's, "Let's have an application process so that we all feel, when this is all said and done, that we've gone through a process rather than just an automatic, "Eversource wants to do this, let's let them do this." That's really, for my, I'm an environmentalist, but I'm also a taxpayer. And, and, you know, there's, there's logical and doable ways to do this, and there's wishful ways to do it. All we're asking is, it's in this day and age, it would be good to have this be a little bit on a higher level of, of process.
Jerry, could you give us a letter that says that specifically, without all the wherases and all this, and do we need all this? This is very confusing. I mean, I think what you're asking for comes down to the last three sentences of this.
Yeah, I'm going to give you this with what is red, which in essence, I mean, I guess I could take that.
Do you have the same of this?
Is that, no.
No, it looks different.
I think that was just written today. This was written for me to read tonight.
Oh, okay.
So it's, it's actually supposed to be crib notes for me so that I'll understand what I'm saying.
You know.
And, you know, the truth is, it's just, it's a simple, it's a simple thing, but...
Well, we're meeting, so we have a special meeting coming up for the MS4, the 21st. So do we want to take, you know, 10 minutes? I can put this on the agenda that we approve? Will we, we come back to this, and then if we like the language that we can come up with?
I, I would comfortably make the motion that we agree to support a full application process for consideration of this issue. Verbiage to be determined and approved at the 21st.
Full application, that's what I did, okay. I already looked that up.
And if you'd like anything more from us, if you'd like me to go back and request the committee that drafted this to draft something else, I'm happy to do so. But again, if any of you can come to this thing on the 22nd, it will be the first time that we're going to be sitting in an office with the Eversource project manager to discuss these things.
I can come on the 22nd.
That's great.
But I would welcome a draft of a streamlined letter on this, just expressing support of the application process.
Okay. So do we want to take a motion to support it without having the language in front of us, or do we need to? I mean, I could come up with something, work with Jerry, RiverCog, and then Tuesday, when we have our meeting, MS4, we could vote on, I mean, I can send it to you.
We're having MS4 on Wednesday, the 21st.
That's what I meant.
He's having a meeting on the 22nd.
Is whatever we had.
Right, but I mean, then we could at least have our support letter.
Yeah, that's a full week away. We could meet early, the night of the 19th, if you wanted to, if you had a...
Oh, that's true, the night before, I mean, right before the town meeting.
If you'd like to do that.
Shall we do that?
That would give you a couple more days.
Come up with some language. I can mail it out to you. You can tweak it, and then we'll have a special Board of Selectment meeting before the town meeting, and that way you'll have that letter potentially that, I mean, we do support the idea of it and the concept.
Sure, sure.
But we don't really support the language. Basically, what they talked about, they want us to pass a resolution, and just talks about the horizontal drilling under the bed of the river and that sort of thing, and, and I'm not 100%.
So again, so you'd rather than support the detail of how it might be done under, underground, you would rather have a simpler thing, pretty much what I just read to you.
Even simpler than the letter, just basically saying that we support the application, a full application process for Eversource on this issue.
I understand. As opposed to supporting a specific way to approach it.
Exactly.
We're just asking you to support the protocol. Fine.
I mean, the ultimate goal, if they can put them underground, but I, I do concern, you know, I'm concerned about the spawning grounds, all that kind of stuff under the river, and especially in Haddam where they've just had that disruption of the bridge.
Right.
Like, whatever that ecosystem is under there has been really impacting.
Well, like Jerry did say, like, like.
Just know that we have discussed this aspect. I mean, we have, we have a variety of people on Gateway, right? So we don't just have one view, we certainly don't. And people ask these very exact questions. In fact, I did. The thing is, the way drilling is done and the way the, the, they're not laying this cable on the riverbed. This is going to be many feet below the riverbed. It's not going to disturb, just like the, the Channel to France doesn't lay on the bottom of the, of the English Channel. It's, it's deep beneath that. Now, again, we all initially say, "Cost, how can you possibly afford to do this?" All I'm saying is, times have changed, and really what I'm saying, what we're saying is, let's, let's have the application process. Then we can all walk away, when they put those things above, we can all walk away saying, "You know what? We did our due diligence. No steps were skipped, and that was the conclusion that was arrived at."
We did a 36-inch gas line up in Danbury, where the Danbury Rest Area is. That's where the Jack and Pitt started. It went four miles underneath 84 and came out the other way, 100 feet down. So I, I know, I'm very familiar with, with this type of stuff, so, but it's the, the money.
Absolutely, 100%.
You know, again, we didn't disturb I-84, we didn't disturb people's houses, but it, those four miles.
And I agree, and by today's, by today's world and economy, money is going to rule out of it, as it does anyway. All, we're talking about the process. Thank you so much for your time.
Yeah, thank you, Ken. Sorry, I got to, all right, audiences, citizens, our second of public, public engagement. Anyone in the audience would like to address the board? Anyone online? No? Okay. All right, and selectmen report. I thought I had a whole bunch of things, but I, I didn't write them down, so. I have a bullshit. We are going to meet... We are going to meet on Wednesday night to have an MS4 meeting. I did reach out planning and zoning about the ordinance meeting, and we're trying to come up with, we were just going to set up the meeting, and I think the feedback I got was planning and zoning members wanted to be present, so now it's going to be a little bigger at the meeting. So perhaps it'd be easier for us just to go to a planning and zoning meeting and then have it on their agenda? I don't know. I might think of other things. Go ahead.
I think the main thing on those ordinance, the first three that we have was operational, like, can we have multiple, can we have one committee handle multiple things? It was more operational of how we want to run it here to smooth it out. So if that doesn't bore them to death, we can get that sorted out.
And then the one you, then the one you sent out today or yesterday, the transfer station.
Oh, yes.
I skimmed through it, there's some things that pop out.
Yeah, so the transfer station has been working very hard, but wanted our feedback, so that's why I sent it out.
Whether it's a complete new ordinance or just to tweak it, there's some things with the fines that scared me.
Yeah, okay. So do you want us to send an individual feedback, or do we want to have a discussion on it in a separate working session? How do you want to handle that?
I would like each of you to kind of tweak it and draft it, and then we should sit down with the transfer station committee and present our findings.
Okay.
So that they can reincorporate what we found. Sorry.
It's all right. It's all, this allergies.
It is all allergies.
Can I mention a couple things?
Sure.
I had the pleasure of going to the annual meeting of the Fountain Hill Cemetery, and they, they talk about the progress they're doing on the pond and on the green burial plot, and they specifically wanted to thank the board of selectmen for the support and keeping it in the budget this year. They're working very hard to keep that steady. They see it being steady, not having to raise, since they just wanted to express appreciation.
How is their fundraising for the fountain coming along?
They are about to do a mailer, they're, they have a significant amount they still need to raise.
Okay.
And so, yes, so they are in plans on working with the community on that. I'm wondering if we have an update on the logistics of the sale of the two properties at the industrial incubator park.
Yeah, it's, we just, I gave Jane some dates for when we want the bids back, and I don't know if that gives people enough time. But, so she's working on putting the package together, shows all the information on the properties.
So then the processes, you'd have a notice in the, notice it publicly?
That is my understanding. We'd notice it publicly, maybe take out an ad on the Valley Courier if we wanted, and that way, and then I know several residents have reached out to both of you, several have reached out to me, or business owners that are interested, so I think then we would make sure all those people got word that it was being marketed, so that nobody misses out.
We had mentioned it'd be a couple of weeks, we've kind of blown past that. Are we thinking it's going to be another month roughly before Jane gives feedback?
Well, I wasn't sure. No, no, she, she was ready to go. I sent her everything, she just said she needed dates. So I thought we needed, I said, maybe Friday, the first Friday of June, we want everything back. I didn't know how much time people needed for due diligence, if you were going to be a buyer.
Well, we have to post it.
Want everything back, what, with the bids?
The bids would come back.
But we haven't even posted it yet, so it's going to take us at least a week to get this posted in the Valley Courier. I mean, it wouldn't get in the Valley Courier before the 29th at this point. So if it's in the 29th, I think having it back to one is a little tight.
What's our first selectmen's meeting in June?
10th.
I'd like to have the information back by that Friday.
The 6th?
The 6th, and then we can make a decision that, at the selectmen's meeting? That gives three weeks, right? Almost.
It gives the people looking for it and getting their bids together, let's say it appears.
There's not much to put that type of.
On the 29th.
Not much to put that type of print.
It'll be on the website as well. I mean, you know, so we'll put it out there everywhere we can.
I want it done, I just want people to be aware of it and be able to.
And it's not like you're being, you know, a paving job or a sewer job. I mean, the property's the property.
All right, so basically, you're aiming to get it in the paper for the 29th, and asking for bids to us by the 6th? That gives them a week and a day. And then are we going to meet before the selectmen meet, or at the meeting when we do the bids? Or what's our process there?
Usually you have the bids come in by close of Business Day or noon, so I would say 4:00 PM on the 6th. But we can also say noon on the 6th or.
But are you guys open?
4:00 PM on the 9th.
On the 6th, aren't, don't you guys close at noon?
Close at noon, so that's why I was just saying, so maybe either noon on the 6th or Monday at 4, Monday the 9th.
Yeah, Monday at 4.
Okay, so Monday, Monday the 9th. All right, that'll be very wonderful to have that done. Along those, the lines of publications, in the budget process, Eric gave a list of the roads that need paving. Wasn't, the money isn't enough to cover all those roads, that's for sure, much as we'd like to. When do you think there'll be an actual paving schedule and a bid process up for the paving and open? Because I think surrounding towns are doing that already.
Yeah, I think Eric's already been working on that.
So he's working on it, but when do we think that it'll be up?
He's not posting anything, he's reaching out to vendors.
He's not, he's not posting any notification?
He's not going to do an RFP. Official, he's, I mean, he's doing the RFP that the new procurement policy allows. So he'll be reaching out to the companies that have bid before and any other companies that are out there that he knows, so.
And he's getting triple bids, just look at this?
Yeah.
And then?
I talked to him briefly Saturday when I went to cleanup, and I asked him about it. And he said he's putting it together right now.
Yep.
So there'll be nothing put on the website, there'll be nothing put in the paper?
We might put it on the website, I'm not sure.
He didn't say anything but the website.
Yeah, I mean, I can talk to him about putting it on the website, but he's working on it, and he's reached out to, I mean, we've talked about who he's reaching out to that have bid before, and any new companies that he thinks would be interested or have the expertise and the equipment and that sort of thing, so it's in the works.
And the process then is, when we actually see it, are we sitting down and reviewing them as we have done other contracts in the past, or how is, what is our process and involvement as selectmen going to be, if any?
I don't think I reviewed all the bids last year for paving. I think that was left up to the director of the DPDW. And if Eric needs assistance or input, then usually reach out to the building official or.
All right, so conceptually, that could be done and ready in two, two, three weeks?
Yeah, could be ready, could be ready now. I mean, if he was working on it Saturday. He was working on it like two weeks ago, and I talked to him, so it's probably close.
And one other follow-up, we had had the incident on the town green where there had been the drinking and the public urination, and then the overnight sleeping. And I had written a note and had the opportunity, actually, to talk with Steve a little bit about it, with Constable Kraus, Officer Kraus about it. I was wondering, because we have an ordinance now, our town ordinance prohibits those sorts of activities. My understanding is, when Troop F took the call on this, they came up, they didn't actually remove the people or do anything. And I'm wondering if there is additional training or information we want to give through Officer Kraus or through you, Carol, to Troop F on how we want these sorts of situations handled? I mean, the actual adjacent homeowner, I think, had to do three calls before action was taken, and this came from early afternoon until overnight, and then two calls the following morning. I'm wondering, is there more engagement or training we can do with Troop F? Because it's not always going to be our local constable who's here when a call comes in due to coverage.
Right. We don't have anything in our ordinance right now, but if it's a public spot, so if people are in a public park, you can't really kick them out.
I have to double-check. I thought I looked, and it says something about no alcohol. I don't know if it specifically said no urination, but it definitely, I can double-check that, but I believe we have an alcohol ordinance.
Well, I spoke to our resident trooper, and basically, we don't have any signage down there that says, you know, that the park closes at a certain time, and it's a public park, so you really can't kick people out if they're sitting in the public park. You know, so, public disturbance, there are things we could do, and maybe we do have to add a few more tweaks to our ordinances to tighten them up. So when I, the discussions I had with the officers, there wasn't really necessarily a means in our books to kind of change that behavior.
Would we have to change the ordinance if we just put signs up that says no alcoholic beverages in the park? Would that have to go to change the ordinance, or can we just put that?
I would imagine if we post signs, then we can have, the officers can enforce them.
If that would be helpful.
I'm just, you know.
It's a beautiful location, and you hate to put a sign that says, "No alcohol, no drugs, no public urination, no overnight sleeping."
Exactly, exactly. So maybe then, the way around that is to put it in the ordinance, and you don't have to have the signs up.
Right.
I mean, we had those issues at the park, so we did put, you know, "Park closes at dusk," these kind of things.
The only thing I said that for Carol is because, let's rewind to the situation where the Troop F came out. They don't know our ordinance.
Exactly.
But if there's a sign posted somewhere there, then it's on the sign. You know, again, you're going to get a rookie police officer or whatever officer up here, and he's going to look, and he's not going to know our ordinance, so if it's posted, a small sign, I'm not saying a big billboard sign, but something, I don't know.
So just think about.
It's not just there.
I don't, I don't know that this is going to be a one-off, and maybe this is not going to happen the balance of the year, but it, but it did happen. And, you know, I think what you say, Duane, is that, you know, somebody up there isn't necessarily going to know our ordinances, but I guess my point on even bringing this up is, is they are servicing us, and we're paying for them to do this, and maybe we need to clue them into our ordinances and our expectations a little more. We had that meeting in November, and I don't know, we haven't, I have not been engaged in a follow-up meeting since then, but I don't know, Carol, if you want to have another follow-up meeting with them, and if this could be part of it, what do you think?
You know, you're asking a question that I don't know the answer to. Like, Troop F handles quite a lot of communities, and I don't think they expect the first selectman or the board of selectmen to go in there and go over our rules for our town.
And that.
And then the next town's going to come in and say, "Well, in our town, we do this." It's sort of, you know, I think they, they use a lot of common sense in a lot of these things, you know.
But they didn't handle the situation, so, you know, and it went on.
Well, they thought they handled it, apparently. I mean, they didn't handle it to the homeowners, you know.
They didn't handle it all the afternoon and evening and night of the first night, and they didn't handle it at 6:00 the next morning. It did get handled by 9:00.
Well, maybe it's just those officers. Our resident trooper could reach out to those officers and question, you know, because maybe each time somebody showed up was a different officer. And then they thought, well, the person's sleeping it off, if it was somebody that was a little drunk, and they thought that was better, they left them, leave them there, and that sort of thing. I don't know. It's definitely worth a discussion with Steve. The lieutenant has stepped down at Troop F, so there is a new lieutenant in charge, Troop F.
Who's the new lieutenant?
I have not met him yet, but Lieutenant Kendrick has stepped down.
So possible discussion with Steve, what about signs, and either way do we want to take this, anywhere? Do we want to follow up?
I'd like to think a little more about that, because the signs, I'm just somebody that hates signs. I, they just ruin your, your look, your view, you know, like, it's such a beautiful park.
Yeah.
I hate to put signs up that say, again, commonsensical kind of things, like, pick up your trash. Like, I don't know why we have to have a sign that says that.
I know. And by and large, it works pretty well over here. It really works very well. This was a, you know, hopefully a one-off.
And it's two unfortunate souls that we know, and they have issues, and they find themselves empty for her occasionally, and then they move on, and it's just unfortunate. Anyway.
The last thing, any update on staffing for the assistant in the finance director? Any progress?
We're just setting up some interviews, I guess, but no. Yeah. Please. All right.
One quick question, I know we've kicked this horse around, but I got corralled Tuesday night at the referendum vote. I think we should set up a meeting with all parties, unless, unless it's been resolved about the tabulators and the class that.
Oh, yes, we have to do that.
So I think we should, all the three selectmen.
Okay.
The voter registers and the library, and let's get this resolved. I mean, I, I was there, I just had a quick look, and I made, I made a couple of quick suggestions. I didn't have a tape measure to measure things, but we have to figure this out, and everyone's got to work together.
Yep, okay, good idea.
So however we set up a meeting, if it's in the afternoon or whatever, whatever we have to do.
I think that would be very helpful, to have both of you at a meeting.
Happy to join.
Yeah.
Because I've had two meetings, and it doesn't seem like either side wants to come to the middle and.
Well, we've got, we got it.
Find a common ground, so.
We have done on all sides, because it's.
Yeah, so that would be helpful.
Great, so.
We'll get Susan and the registrars. Okay.
And I'll get the other lady to. Come on, head out.
Storytime.
Storytime lady. This is.
Oh, well, wait. All right.